We'll go ahead and call the December seventeen Planning Commission meeting to order. This is Dale Eiler, the Chair of the Planning Commission. And if we could, could we get a roll call of who's present?
Commissioner Shannon?
Here.
Commissioner Shaker? Commissioner?
I don't see him on.
I see him on, on the side near John. Yeah, I'm not sure.
Maybe he's muted.
Are you looking for me, John?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry about that. I was having trouble getting in. I just got in now, so I apologize for that.
Commissioner Ali?
Here.
Commissioner Adams? Commissioner Doster?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Blake?
Here.
Chairperson Eiler?
Here. Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and have the Pledge of Allegiance. And I see Daria's on top there, at least on my screen, so would you mind leading us in the pledge, Daria?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
America.
To the Republic.
And to the Republic. One nation, under God. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Richard, for your picture of the flag.
Okay. Actually, I've got a little blip I'm supposed to read here regarding the COVID meetings. And so I'll go ahead and do that. Governor has declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. The governor also issued executive order in 2020 which instructed California to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are the top priority for the city of Yuba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate safety precautions. How to participate in the virtual meeting. This meeting is utilizing Zoom. For this meeting, we will be using the questions and answers functionality of this tool in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, the questions and answers section of the app is located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the questions and answers portion of the app and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Be timely with your questions as once the public hearing is closed or the item has been discussed by council and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item.
So Dale, I'd just like to add to that, that if any of the public online would like to comment later on in the public hearing or speak, use the question and answers button on the Zoom and state your name and when you'd like to speak. And then Brian with our IT department, he could toggle to allow the speaking at that time.
Okay. And with that, we'll talk, speaking of public comment, for public comment for items not on the agenda, you are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited. Written requests, members of the public submitting written requests. Do we have any written requests? And then Ben, I guess I would ask, do we have anyone online with us?
So there's no written requests received to the planning department? And Brian, I don't know if I have the whole list of people on there, but I understand there are some participants.
We do have six participants at this time. Nobody's acknowledged that they want to speak. I also want to say they can use the raise hands function. And if I see a hand raised, then I'll know that they want to speak on that item as well. And then I'll just call out the name and then allow them to speak.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Anyway, so at this time, based on the fact that we, do we have anyone that would like to speak on items not on the agenda? Okay, it appears no, so we'll go ahead and move on. The next item on the agenda is the modifications approval of the agenda. Do we have any modifications or comments on the agenda?
Dale, this is Lori. I just wanted to let you know I joined.
Thank you, Lori. Appreciate that. Okay, hearing none. We'll go ahead and move to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes. At this point, any comments, questions or concerns about the minutes or a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Ali and Commissioner Blake with the second.
Thank you.
All those in favor, oh, we need a roll call vote for approval of the minutes.
Commissioner Shannon?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaker?
Approve.
Commissioner Ali?
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Doster?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Blake?
Yes.
Chairperson Eiler?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding development plan twenty dash oh three to allow construction of a hundred unit affordable housing apartment complex located at four seventy Bernard Drive. And with that, I believe we have a staff report. And so, Ben, I believe you would be presenting that.
Yeah, so bear with me here. I'm going to share my screen, try to get to the presentation. I see it coming up. So share. Share computer sound. Hey Brian, when I click on the share screen, why isn't it show all windows? There it is. Okay, so can the group see that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, everybody. Well, good evening. So the item before you is regarding the development plan twenty dash oh three, the Richland Village Affordable Housing Complex project. And so this is a project that is being applicant is the Regional Housing Authority. And so with us, I think is our participants is Gus, the Executive Director and his project teams, Architect. And some of his staff are here online to help answer questions when we get to that. So I'll work through the presentation here. So the item is regards to a development plan due to the size of the proposed project. But the property in question is at four seventy Bernard Drive, APN fifty-three four seventy zero nine one. So it's at the southeast corner of the Richland complex. And so the Regional Housing Authority complex there on Garden Highway, southeast corner where it butts the airport is there at the kind of the dead end of Bernard that they're going to be working to put a cul-de-sac at. Let's propose. So the project is proposal is for a hundred and seventy-six affordable unit apartment complex, eighty-eight one-bedroom, forty-four two-bedroom and forty-four three-bedroom units with approximately twenty-six hundred square foot community center. And so the entitlement process, so the reason we're before you tonight is that based on the city's municipal code for the size of the complex, with this one being over a hundred units, the process is that it comes to the planning commission for a recommendation. But with it being over a hundred units, it ultimately goes to the city council for the final decision. And so with this, we're working through our standard review process with the planning commission to, you know, confirm that it meets the, it's compatible with existing and expected neighboring improvements since adequate public facilities are available to serve the project. And so with that, though, your decision tonight is for a recommendation. It was not technically for an approval, but a recommendation to council. And this item's anticipated to go to the city council at their January nineteenth meeting with the goal to hit funding deadlines for finance, funding deadlines to the state, submit a package to them in February. And so before you is a picture of the site plan. It's a little zoomed out here, a little bit hard to read with the black and white, but it's basically eight multi-unit buildings with a community center located towards the northeast side of the of the complex. I don't know if you could see my mouse is the community center portion. Three of the buildings are adjusted in height on the east half of the buildings to meet the height requirements associated with the airport. And so if you look at some of these dashed lines, these are basically the height contour lines associated with the airport land use plan that established the height requirements with it being adjacent to the airport. And so they've, with their design, they've been working on that. And so these buildings on the east side of the site, there's different dashes on these buildings and that reflects a modification to the height. So instead of being three stories all the way across, half the complex is two-story for these for these two buildings here and then one story here. So the first phase of this, this project's being broke down into two phases, basically because of the financing required for it. You know, Gus, I'm sure he'll discuss later, but unfortunately, one of the things that stuck with us was the affordable housing, the affordability for the end user, the building, the affordable housing is not affordable. And so this first phase, ninety-two units and a community center, it has this northern parcel, parcel one, would be the four buildings in the community center is, we got a price tag for around thirty-four million dollars. With the phase two being the south half of the parcel with the remaining eighty-four units. So let me go back to the bike to this a little bit. So the project plan shows a proposed onsite bicycle path. It's hard to tell, but there's a little bike path on this north that comes into the facility, into the central portion of the project. The connection will provide direct bicycle access to the adjacent low-volume roadways that can then work their way out to Garden Highway. Sidewalks internal to the site would connect with a sidewalk networks along Bernard Drive. Internal to the site, pedestrians have access to both the apartments and community amenities, and two pedestrian crossings are planned in conjunction with ADA accessible parking stalls. So the, looking at the land use maps, so on the left is the general plan land use map. It shows the medium-low density residential. So the area is designated in the general plan as medium-low density residential. And so I wanted to be clear on this when I worked through this. And so the general plan land use calls for a density of six to fourteen units per gross acre. And then when you get to the zoning map on the right, the R three, that allows construction, R three multiple-family residential, which is intended for the highest density residential usage in the city. You're allowed to build up to one unit per fifteen hundred square feet, which basically puts it at twenty-nine units per acre. And so there's a little bit of discrepancy, but the way this was done and just with the past on the New Haven where it was a forty-unit apartment on a half acre, basically, is that when the general plan, this was one large parcel controlled by the Regional Housing Authority, and it was designated with this medium density, the sixteen to fourteen units is the average density that not to exceed based on what's out there, the mix, the variety of housing that's out there. But then the zoning allows for this higher density construction. And so when we looked at that, to see how it fit in the city zoning regulations, the overall, with this proposed project, the overall density for that site would be eleven. So it's still within the general plan land use of six to fourteen. And so even though we get onto this small portion of it, it's a higher rate than what's allowed. Well, it's allowed for the R three with the density bonus per the state, but it ultimately it falls under the general plan for the average being within that six to fourteen. So I'd be happy to answer any more questions with that. So to go back to the zoning, to complicate things a little bit more, is that the zoning for the city for R three allows one unit per fifteen hundred square feet for this land use. And that's about twenty-nine units per acre. State law has given density bonuses. There's an endeavor across the state to make things more dense, make less parking, you know, with intent attempts to have better land use and better climate effects, you know, basically with people not driving and parking as much. And so there's definitely a push for that. And so with one of the recent state laws, they've given a density bonus credit where with its affordable housing, you could have up to an eighty percent addition. And so that basically changes that number. So the city's municipal code has this R three standard of twenty-nine units per acre. This bumps it up eighty percent to approximately fifty-two units per acre. So to long story short, with the project, we're meeting our state land, we're still within the general plan land use range, and it falls within the density bonus for the state. So harp on that a little bit. Okay, here's just the visual with the airport. The airport's a big deal because it's right next door. We reached out and distributed the plan to the airport reps in the county just to get any comments. And I know the Regional Housing Authority's team coordinated to meet all those requirements as far as setbacks that use in the height of the buildings. Some bordering information. The, we'll go back here to maybe on the, so what's around it? You have the airport on the east. You have the existing Regional Housing Authority complex pretty much surrounding it to the north and west. And then to the south, you have the industrial park, really, the future industrial park. It's business and light industrial to the south. It's currently ag land. And so on three sides of it, almost four sides, it's developed. Towards that south end is what's planned for manufacturing, business, light industrial on that adjacent property to the south. Some elevations, so you know, it's not over the top, I guess, is the initial response on this. There's, it's contemporary architecture. It's brown, beige, green, earth tones, lap horizontal siding. They help reduce the massing. I would say that these are definitely not over the top. And the city recognizes that, and we worked with the staff a little bit to see what we could do. You know, to find that balance, that value engineer price where they needed to hit, you know, this is a thirty-four million dollar project without it being, you know, elaborately tall or inside interior elevators or any of those maybe items that would really separate it to a high-end status. And so we worked with Gus, value engineered it to try to get the most bang for our buck with colors, some siding, doing some different things to the stairs to enhance it. So it looks nice and be durable and be meet the city's design standards and also not coming at a price that's reasonable that has a potential of being funded. And so with that, you'll notice the solar panels. One of the funding sources that the housing authority is going after has to do with being green. And so there'll be a little discussion afterwards, but a big part of this project, they have to implement the solar panels, kind of, and really look at a green building design and then also have those pedestrian bicycle elements into the project and then with the lower parking amount based on the funding source that they're going after. Some different elevations, these are to call out, these are the, basically the elevations, these top two pictures that show the buildings that are affected by the contours of the airport where they have to reduce the height on the east side of the buildings in order to meet those height requirements. The buildings on the west will be full height, three stories across with a few of those buildings on the east affected. And so you'll see one that's affected the most is this top building where it's three stories for half and then it's dropped to a half, to a single story. And so here's the elevation renderings of the community building. So to get into, just to circle back with proposed density parking bonus. So California state law is allowing this density bonus, which exceeds our municipal code zoning ordinance, but it's still within our general plan density. The standard for the medium density residential is one unit per fifteen hundred square feet. That gives us about a hundred and forty-six units. However, the California density bonus law allows for an exception in the density. The amount of the density bonus is set up on a sliding scale based on the percentage of affordable units. With this complex, it's a hundred percent affordable. And so the project is eligible for the eighty percent increase in density. The parking bonus, and so the parking is also an item that we're looking for approval with this because based on the city's ordinances, a multifamily, they have an established rate of one space per one bedroom, one and a half spaces per two bedrooms and two spaces for three or more bedrooms, which would have put the standard parking requirement at two hundred and sixty units. With the state density bonus, it's actually saying you're supposed to have point five spaces per unit. And so what they're proposing, so that would bring it down to really the minimum that they would have to have would be eighty-eight, since they're within a half mile of an accessible apartment. And so what they're proposing is well above that. Have it written down here. I believe it's a hundred. It's I'll circle back, but I believe we're around a hundred and eighty-six. I think it's a hundred and eighty-six parking stalls. But I'll circle back on the number of parking spaces. And so with that, the traffic study, there was a traffic study done in November that also looked at the circulation and the parking. And what that discussed was that the average peak parking demand for affordable housing was about one per unit. And then also with the addition of the bikes and over putting more bike storage, it looks like that the project will meet the need, even though it's not at the minimum at eighty-eight and it's not our, the city's standard design at two sixty, what they're proposing is basically at the average peak demand for affordable housing. And I'm sure the project team could elaborate on that further. Hundred and eighty-six spaces. Okay, and so bicycle parking, city code requires three percent of parking spaces at minimum to be bicycle parking. Honestly, that's really minimal, three percent of a hundred and eighty, you know, two sixty, a hundred and eighty-six or eighty-eight. You're talking five, six, you know, not very many, depending on what number you use. What they're proposing is eighty-four bicycle racks in two different locations. And I'm sure they'll provide a little bit more info on that as where they plan to, if there's any regulations on where people are required to keep the bikes and what they anticipate the volume is needed. Here's just a screenshot of the traffic study that was done for the affordable housing. For me, the takeaway on it was that basically the AM peak hour, they thought they'd have twelve coming in, thirty-eight going out at the AM peak hour. And then the PM peak hour, there was forty-three entering and twenty-five exiting for sixty-eight total trips during that peak hour. And so when they're looking at it, obviously there'll be more trips throughout the day, back and forth, but those are kind of the peaks. And then that's how they analyze the effects to the intersections. And so that next table down, it's a little hard to understand, but they looked at two intersections, the Garden Highway and Percy Avenue Miles Avenue signal. And what that basically said is the existing conditions is that it's a twelve-second delay and that's at a level of service B. And then in the morning, in the evening, you're waiting fourteen seconds, you're still a level of service B. With the existing plus project, it didn't change. But then when you look at the Garden Highway Samuel Drive stop control, so if they go farther north and go out the stop sign, that one's even a little more, basically right now, the average is one second level of service A. At the worst leg of that intersection, since there's four-legged intersection, would be a sixteen-second delay, level of service C. And so if you go across to the existing plus project, the, you don't really see much change except for in the PM peak hour, it increases the delay from seventeen seconds to eighteen seconds, and your level of service would stay the same. So environmentally, the project is categorically exempt from environmental review. So there was a lot of, there was a lot of thought and consideration on this and how this project's handled. There's also with federal funding, there's a the project applicants hired an environmental firm to go through it to make sure they're meeting NEPA requirements. And so they're doing, they're filing the federal process to make sure they're in line for meeting any federal needs for funding sources. But with the California, with CEQA, there's a lot of exemptions for infill and specifically for affordable units. And so when the project's under five acres and affordable, it hits this categorically exempt from environmental review process with the project is consistent with applicable general plan. The proposed development occurs within city limits on a project site of no more than five acres, substantially surrounded by urban uses. The project site has no value as habitat for endangered, rare or threatened species. Approval of the project would not result in any significant effects related to traffic noise, air quality or water quality, and the site can be adequately served by all required utilities and public services. And so with that, it was exempt from CEQA, which helps streamline the process for it. And so what's before you is the development plan, a decision on making a recommendation to city council about development plan. And so with the development plan, there's four findings that the commission is to make. The site for the proposed use is adequate in size and shape to accommodate said use, public access, parking, loading yards, landscaping, other features required by this chapter. The streets serving the site are adequate to carry the quantity of traffic generated for the proposed use. The site designed the size and designed the building with complement neighboring facilities. And the applicant satisfies at least one of the findings found in Title Six, Chapter Nine, Article Six of the municipal code related to flood design standards. And so with that, my recommendation is to conduct a public hearing, make the necessary findings to recommend that the city council determine the project is categorically exempt pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act, Section fifteen three-three-two, infield development projects and approved development plan twenty dash oh three to allow for the construction of a one hundred and seventy-six unit affordable housing apartment complex with increases in density and reduced parking in accordance with state law and subject to the project conditions of approval. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Ben. By the way, parking was a hundred and eighty-six onsite parking spaces and eighty-four bicycles. So I just had found that for you while you were talking. At least that's per your write-up. And at this point, I think what I'd like to do, what we typically do is go ahead and have the applicant fill in any gaps. And then we can ask, save up our questions and ask both you and the applicant at the same time, if that works for everyone. So I believe you said Gus was with us today. And I see he's on the Zoom meeting. And Gus, do you have anything you'd like to add or fill in the gaps for us?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'm not seeing like the camera or mute controls. I hope you I hope you can hear me.
Yes.
Uh, very good. So with, with me tonight is also our co-development partners, Sage Housing Group, uh, Shoshana Zatz and, uh, Mr. Luke Watkins. And also our project architect, Mr. Phil Harvey from Koochman Architects. So, uh, Ben, if you don't mind, maybe unmuting them as well in case, uh, uh, you know, there's questions that collectively as a team, we, we can answer or individually. Ben, uh, thank you so much, uh, for the, uh, wonderful presentation on this, this project that we would like to bring to this community. Uh, if we are successful in financing it, um, not a whole lot of gaps, Mr. Chair. Like to add that, uh, that, that the streets that you see in the site plan, Bernard Drive and then the, the, uh. The, uh, perpendicular street there that you see teeing out of, off of Bernard is McKeeham Drive. And those are private streets maintained, uh, by, uh, our agency and, uh, but there's plenty of street parking, uh, available there as well. The, Ben alluded to it earlier as well regarding energy efficiency, uh, the financing, uh. One of the financing sources that we're going after, uh, definitely, uh, you compete with, with, um. The more energy efficient your project is, you know, the higher you, you score in this, in this competitive, uh, environment that affordable housing finance is in. Uh, and so the, we are trying to achieve net zero for, for the property. With everything being electric, uh, no, no, no natural gas appliances or systems at all. Um, another, another unique, uh, or two other unique aspects of, of this financing. The financing is called Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities. It's through HCD and it's part of a state's cap and trade program that I'm, I'm sure many of you are familiar with. And so there's a carve-out for affordable housing. But, uh, one of the, two of the unique features here is that, um, i- is pedestrian, bicycle and public transit. It is, is a big factor in, in our financing. And so our project team has been working really hard and trying to make those connections, uh, for the project site. To improve pedestrian, bike and public transit. And so we're scored on that as well. And so we are working with city staff as well on, um, uh, further north of the site on the Samuel Drive there. And, uh, a large portion of Bernard Drive are public right-of-ways, our city streets, uh, owned and maintained by the city. But we've identified some areas, um, on the, on the, uh, public right-of-way where there's no sidewalks. Uh, and so connecting those sidewalks to the rest of the sidewalks and over to the site, of course, uh, i- i- is, is, uh. Would make us more competitive in our application and would bring money, uh, to conduct some city improvements, um, yeah, at no cost to the city. So in this case, we've identified some, some sidewalks on Samuel Drive, some sidewalks, uh, on McKeeham Drive. And, uh, we would, we would love to work with the city on that and getting their authorization to submit into our application. Uh, approval to conduct this work if the financing is awarded. Uh, obviously conditioned on, 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 on these public improvements being up to city standards. And we, we definitely would rec- recognize that. The second unique component of this type of financing is, uh, how they encourage tran- uh, coordination with, uh, public transit. So we, we've had a few meetings with Mr. Keith Martin, uh, and his, uh, staff, uh, or one of his staff members. On, on coordinating some potential opportunities to bring in financing for, for transit. Uh, and, and, and whether that it's, whether that's electric buses or, or charging stations, uh, improving, uh, bus stops. Uh, and so that, those are exciting opportunities that, that if we are awarded, we can bring in, um. And Luke, I, I'm not sure if you're on and you could speak, but correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's about five, six million dollars that we can bring towards transit. Uh, and that's, that's money that would come into, uh, Mr. Martin and his department to do needed improvements. And we're, we're, we still have ongoing meetings with them and we're regrouping with them, I believe, after the first of the year and, um. You know, it's excited to, to work with other agencies to partner and not just bring affordable housing, but also bring, uh, some improvements to the public right-of-way. And bring some improvements to public transit. And so, um, uh, Luke, is there anything you'd like to add to, uh, to the commission?
No, I think it's an exciting project though for all of these components. And for the residents, it's going to create a very energy efficient product where it's going to be low cost for them to heat and cool their units. And they're going to have access to good pedestrian and bicycle and transit opportunities in the area. So it's an exciting project for that reason.
Thanks, Luke, uh, Phil, our, uh, project architect, is there anything you would like to add on, on design or any architectural, uh, uh, components you'd like to talk about?
Um, I don't think so. I think, um, you know, basically the design of the, of the project was meant to maximize the solar exposure. So that's why the buildings have large sloping roofs that, that face south. So that we could try and get to the net zero energy as, as much as possible. We've done several net zero energy affordable projects, including one in, uh, Woodland that received the United Nations Habitat Award. So you could, you could see the large sloping roof, that, that's basically our, for our solar farm, if you will, we're putting on top of the buildings. And then the building orientations, we're, we're orienting the, the, the walkways, the stairs and the decks to the center court areas of the project. Where we have large center courts between the buildings, um, so that they will face out there and they can see what's going on. Because we, we really want to promote a sense of community and that those play areas are in the middle of the project and that people can watch and see what's going on. The, um, the other thing is we do have, uh, solar, um, screens on the east and the west side to try and reduce the solar panels. But unlike most multifamily projects that we do that, um, are back-to-back units, these are through units. So we're able to get through ventilation on all the buildings. That was something that Luke was very, uh, passionate about. So the project's kind of designed, it's a little bit different than you'd see in a multifamily, uh, affordable project because of those, those elements that help with all the energy efficiency. And then obviously from a design perspective, we've, we've layered the buildings to try and reduce the mass and the bulk of them. Um, and we've used color and texture and materials to achieve that. So that, that's kind of where we are on the design.
Thank you, Phil, thank you, Luke, uh, would definitely, uh, uh, open it up to, uh, you, Mr. Chair and the Commissioners, any comments or questions we would love to address?
Great, okay. And at this time, we'll go ahead and open up for, uh, questions either of staff or of Gus and his team. And, um, uh, does, uh, just kind of start, I'll go around the screen here, um. Commissioner Shannon, do you have any questions?
Um, actually, I just have one brief question. Is this location where the old trailer park was or is it adjacent to that area?
That is correct, that is the trailer park, uh, parcel, Commissioner.
Yay, so they're all gone.
They're not all gone yet, uh, at one point we had over fifty, I think fifty-two, I think at one point, and we are down to eight. Uh, and so we, we are, we have hired a relocation consultant because obviously, uh, state relocation law is triggered. And our relocation consultant will, uh, make sure that the, uh, state required benefits are, you know, for, if we are successful in financing the project. That any state required benefits that they are entitled to will be paid out to them for relocation. The consultant has met with each individual family, um, and one of the things that internally we are, want to, want to do. Is give these families a right of first return, um, so that when the project is built, uh, these eight families will have the option to, uh, get to the front of the line. And that's just something that we want to do for these families if, uh, uh, if, if that's an option they would like to talk. Yes, that is, that is the correct site.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Adams.
Hi, how are you, Gus?
Good, Commissioner Adams, how are you?
Good, good, so I have a few questions. Um, first of all, um, are all of the units going to be subsidized units? Are you doing some subsidized, some not subsidized? How are you structuring that component of your, uh, sources and uses?
Yeah, so, um, all units will have, uh, uh, will be income restricted. The maximum will be sixty percent AMI units, all the way down to thirty percent AMI units. In the, in the first phase, if we, if we build it in, in fa- in the two phases, in the first phase of, which is ninety-two units. Uh, we're looking to commit about twenty, uh, project-based section eight vouchers. And then, uh, the other, you know, seventy-two units would just be, uh, tax credit units with their, um, uh, income limits, as I stated. Up to sixty and, and as low as thirty.
In the rendering, I noticed that you only had one play structure near the community center. And with a project this size being family-based, I, I was hoping to see a little bit more, um, in the sense of open space and play structures for the kids. As you know, I'm very familiar with these types of projects and the problems that can occur if you don't have enough active play area for children.
Sure, sure. Yeah, we did, uh, discuss that and to the, to the north, uh, of the site, there is another brand-new play structure. That's probably, I would say, probably only about two hundred yards away, uh, to the north, right on Bernard Drive. It, it butts up right there on the front and that was, uh, constructed. I think we finished that prod- that project last year and it's brand-new, it's close to the site and we felt that it was, uh, it, the proximity to, to this development site was so close. That we can definitely share that with, uh, with these residents.
When, can you go back to this, um, the slide that shows the, um, the layout of the project? So when I'm looking at this, the center courtyard area that I see, um, where the buildings surround. And I'm assuming that's a grass area that's going to occur within that? Yeah, correct, right where you're pointing. And then I mean, and so correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the structures, um, the unit are going to be facing that area?
Yes.
So then if the kids go to a play area, it would be behind the buildings rather than within the same area as the buildings?
Phil, go ahead, it sounds like you want to.
Actually, the court areas between the buildings are, are approximately sixty feet plus wide. So they're, they're, they're pretty generous spaces and we, we did that because basically we had to move the buildings apart. So they're not shading the solar panels. But we also took that opportunity to take those center courts on both the, the north and the south between the buildings. All the front doors and stairs and the balconies look onto those courts. So they would see everything going on and within those court areas, we do have multiple things spread throughout there. We have basketball courts, um, basically the, uh, the, the driveways that go north and south and are really more fire truck access. And have a turnaround in them, at the turnaround, we will have a basketball court on each, the north and the south side. We also have raised, raised beds, we're, we're showing some opportunities for cornhole and other types of outdoor activities. But we do have several kind of just undefined play areas that they can also use. So we, we're, we're anticipating that we'd have a lot of activity in those courts and we wanted to keep them where people can see what's going on.
Do we have, do, I'm sorry to interrupt, sorry, go ahead.
Sure, no, it's on the landscape plan, it's actually shows a lot more of the uses that are happening in, in those areas.
And there'll be enough concrete, um, in order for kids to ride their scooters and.
Oh, yeah.
Roller skate and things like that, okay.
Right, we, we kind of anticipate that, you know, we have to have those, those two, where you, where you see it says parcel one and parcel two on the map, that's a drive. It's really a, it's really a fire truck access, so they have all that area they can play on as well.
Okay, all right, and then, um, I'm, I'm going to jump around on my comments here because I was taking notes. Um, and as you noted, this, uh, and Ben noted this earlier, this is definitely going to require some NIPA review. How far are you into your NIPA process right now?
Uh, the NIPA, uh, pretty far, I believe, uh, SHPO consultation is in process. Ben, I believe you or, uh, Brian Malars signed off on that letter probably two, three weeks ago, I imagine now. And so I, I, I think we're, I, I, I think the EA is pretty much done. And I think we're just waiting for SHPO consultation and tribal consultation, I believe.
Did you have any noise mitigations from the airport or that you're going to have to deal with on windows and things like that? Did that show up at all?
We, there was, uh, there is a noise study, uh, that was conducted as part of the NIPA. And, uh, we sent that over to, to city staff. And, um, from my recollection, and I'm trying to bring it up here on my computer, is that for operations, we met all the minimum requirements. And the only area where mitigation is needed, uh, would be during construction on the heavy equipment side. Um, and all the other, uh, rated or, or analyzed components of the noise study. Uh, we are, uh, uh, meeting the requirements.
Okay. All right, um, onsite traffic flow, was that a part of your, your study that you did for traffic flow or did you just do offsites?
Um, that, uh, not sure if you could speak to that, Ben, but, but I believe that was, mm, uh, offsite, correct?
So i- in the analysis, if your peers actually did both, they did the internal circulation, it, I just, because I just got done cruising through it for the presentation here tonight. But it basically, it summed up that the internal circulation was adequate with the multiple driveways for fire and for the, the volume of traffic and the size.
All right, I'm almost done. Now I'm familiar with this particular funding source. So I wish, um, or I want you to potentially go into a little more detail on your, uh, transit improvements. Because that's, as you know, is a large component, um, of this funding and it has, it holds a pretty significant point category. Um, so can you go into a little bit more detail about how you're going to maximize those points? And how those benefits are going to come through to the transit component? I really see that our community is in need of multiple transportation options. I think it was, it is somewhat lacking, I'm not that by anybody's, um, fault, just by the way that we work and the commute patterns that we have. Because of our location, we don't really fit into that, you know, transit opportunity type district. Um, so I am interested in a few more details on how you're going to make improvements and how that ties in with plans that the city already has to enhance. That transportation component, because I really want to make sure that we have a well-thought-plan and we're not just plugging something in to meet the grant requirements. Um, I know that, you know, is a tendency when we do this type of work, um, to make sure we hit those components sometimes as minimal as possible. But I just want to make sure that, um, I understand the thought process and how you've implemented that into this project scope.
Yeah, so the transfer, we, we still don't know, the transportation components, we're still having ongoing meetings with Mr. Martin and his staff. And, and they're mulling around different, uh, uh, ideas and there, there's nothing, there, there, there's nothing. That we've concluded that will be part of the project application. I mean, we're still, he, as I mentioned, he's still mulling around different suggestions, uh, such as electric buses, such as, uh, improving, uh, or increasing rather. Access during what the rush hour quote-unquote periods of time. Uh, one of their issues that all transit agencies are seeing at the moment is, uh, just massive decreases in ridership because of COVID. And so that, that's, that, that's the, the, the wild card here is that they're trying to figure out what they can commit to. And not over-commit themselves for transportation improvements, uh, for the application, because we don't want to apply for money that they won't be able to use. And so, um, you know, it's, it's.
We have to remember all these guidelines were written pre-COVID, so.
They are and, uh, but they're, they, they change them every year and the guidelines are currently still, still, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Luke, but they're still in draft form. The guidelines are not, the new, for this round, they're not expected to come out until February, it sounds like. Um, and so they, they, they're changing them constantly and there's been a lot of public comment that, that because of COVID. You know, public transit is not how it was pre-pandemic. So, um, you know, I, we, I don't have an answer to your question quite yet because we have not, um. Decided yet with mutually with transit, what would be the best project to put together as far as public transit, uh, into the application yet? Um, there, there's just so many unknowns. Mr. Martin is very, obviously he's been doing this for many years, for those of you that know him. And, you know, he's, one of the things that, that we have been discussing with him is the state mandate for electric buses that's coming down the pipeline. And so that's one of the ideas that he's, that he's. he's thinking about, and could AHSC pay potentially for, for, uh, a, a bus or two that are electric along with the infrastructure that's needed for the, the, to charge those buses and park those buses? But, but again, he, he's just, you know, he, he's concerned about, about COVID and, and, and overcommitting. And so where we, um, can definitely report back, you know, to you, once we, we finalize what kind of transit component will be part of the application, but it's still, uh, it, it, it's, it's still too early.
Are you, I, I notice broadband as, you know, a large, or as a smaller component of the, of the scoring structure. Um, just to throw my two cents in, maybe, um, beefing up the broadband, um, capabilities and strengthening the signals for the units to support people, um, accessing the virtual world that we've now come to know very well, um, as a part of the project.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent. Uh, uh, the voucher commitment that we would do on the twenty of the units, those require, HUD has a broadband requirement anyway, uh, and so we're, we're pretty happy.
Making it statewide, yeah.
Exactly. We like promoting that as well, and HUD requires it anyway, and so it's, it's kind of a win-win, and that will be a part of the project. It's, uh, a requirement.
All right, thanks, Gus, that's all I had.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Adams. Uh, Commissioner Schaefer. Any comments, questions? Okay. John, you there? We can come back. Um, Commissioner Dusha?
I have no questions.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Ali?
I have no questions at this time. Thank you, Dale.
Okay. Uh, Vice Chair Blake?
Hi, thank you. Uh, no questions, they've all been, um, addressed with the previous commissioners' inquiries. Um, I did just want to say, um, I love this project for our community. We certainly need additional affordable housing, and the fact that it's a net zero energy is exciting, but my most, um, pleased component are between the raised garden beds, the play area, and obviously, um, connecting all of the sidewalks for the city, I think that, and, and pedestrian-friendly as well. So appreciate the work, and I look forward to this project coming to fruition, so good luck on, uh, receiving funding.
Thank you, Commissioner Blake.
Uh, Commissioner Ali?
I, I already said I didn't have any.
That's right, I'm sorry. Uh, the screen's moving around on me, so, um, uh, I did have, uh, just a couple of questions, uh, primarily for Ben, I believe. Um, the, uh, the question about the, the bicycles, I think the parking more than adequate for the, for these types of units, it seems like. Obviously, it's meeting our standards, but, uh, with respect to bicycles, and Gus, maybe you can chime in here too, but, um, do we have enough at eighty-four for a hundred and seventy-six units? Um, what happens if we determine that that, that isn't quite gonna get it? Um, and, and I guess my, my overall question with respect to that is, are we meeting, uh, well, it appears we are meeting our standards, so, um, and, and actually exceeding them, but, uh, what about the, the actual, uh, the, the what if the reality is different from what our standards are?
Gus, I'll defer to you on, on this. I know you guys had, had thought about it, have information on it.
Sure, sure. No, I mean, as you stated, Mr. Chair, we're, we're being, I think, very generous in terms of, uh, the, uh, standards, uh, of the city. Um, you know, with other AHSC projects, uh, that have been submitted to, to HCD in the, in the previous five rounds, uh, this is pretty, uh, the ratio that we have, I think is pretty average. Um, I don't know, Luke or Phil, if you wanna add anymore to it. Um, Phil, on, from an architectural standpoint, uh, in the future, if we needed to add, uh, uh, some additional spaces, is, is, do you see any issues?
No, I, I, I think, wha- what we're providing is eighty-eight, that these are secured bicycle parking spaces. They're actually in a structure that's lockable, and they have racks inside, so that's, that's the big storage. So there's one per two units, and that's, we find that pretty average around, but if we wanted to add more, I would suggest that we just do some, some bike racks on the outside that, that they can lock their bikes up to. Um, but the ratio that we're having here is pretty much what we see on most of our projects, um, that are trying to promote bicycle riding. And, and remember, it is secured storage, so it's not, not like it's just, uh, they're sitting out in the open somewhere.
So, so the eighty-four that we're providing would be secured, and if in the future we needed to add just your traditional, you know, bike racks that you see at public parks, I think we could gather those around the, the, the project without, without, without an issue?
Correct. And, and we try to put the bike, the secured bike rack facilities in the center of the project so that people will use them and they can get easily access to the bike trail and, and to their homes as well. Um, so i- and, and our whole goal is to try and get it so people don't s- store bikes on their, their balconies.
Right.
Okay, all right. And then, um, Ben, just in terms of the, uh, complementing this project versus, um, the other new one that's going up at the corner of Percy and Garden, I, I believe that's the intersection, um, that's three-story, h- how do these two stack up against each other? What, um, I mean, in a nutshell, are, are they complementary or, um, I wanna, I just wanna make sure that they're not distinctly different, because we're building, you know, it seems like we're building around this area, and we wanna make sure that we're at least in the ballpark of, um, being the same architecturally colored schemes, that kind of thing.
So New Haven at the corner of, uh, Miles or Percy and, and Garden Highway is a really nice project. It's, it's, uh, has storefront windows, it has some concrete wall structures in the front, and then it has some, uh, has some lap siding in, in different, you know, it's articulated real well in and out with the, with the higher, with the rate, the high, high building height. And so it's, it's a nice project, but I would al- also argue that it's, it's a slightly different spot with it being, um, focused right on Garden Highway at the corner entrance to the project. And so, um, I think you're far enough away, even though the materials, you have some lap siding and some stucco, but I, I think that they're far enough away in, in the, the variety of the buildings between there and here, um, it provided enough distance to, to have that distinction. But, um, New Haven is a different building, um, and, but it, but it, it really different, more visible location.
Great. Okay, thank.
And it's forty units on, in a very small area. There's not this community layout with, um, open space, uh, you know, for more of a living. Uh, but, but, um, architects and Gus, please, please add to that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, and, uh, from this point, and we can always circle around with more questions here in a, in a bit, but, uh, we do need to open up the, uh, uh, public hearing, and, uh, I don't know if there, we still have folks online, but, uh, this would be the, uh, the time to speak, uh, or ask questions regarding this project, and I guess people are typing in their questions if I'm to understand correctly. And, and I don't see that any questions have been typed in on the question and answer sheet, if that's the one that people are typing in on.
Brian, I'm gonna relay, rely on you if you have, if you see anything come through, just let us know.
Yeah, nothing so far, no requests to speak.
Okay, so with that, go ahead and, uh, yes, Commissioner Schaefer?
Yeah, I apologize, I dropped the call, uh, by accident, uh, when my turn, uh, was called, but I do have some questions I wanted to ask.
Okay, actually, um, at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and close the, the public hearing, and then, um, uh, Commissioner Schaefer, go ahead with your questions.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. So I'm just wondering, had, given the fact that we're having, uh, you know, uh, this is being inhabited by residents, um, has there been any kind of soil testing done, uh, to confirm that there's no contamination of that soil?
Uh, Commissioner Schaefer, we've conducted a, uh, a Phase One environmental review is, uh, in process at the moment. Uh, it's not final yet. Uh, we've been a firm we've worked with before called NV Five, formerly known as Holdridge and Call, they're pretty, pretty much experts in the field, but yeah, that Phase One is under review. Um, and, uh, as part of our, as part of our, um, not so much our AHSC plat- application, but our, our, another, uh, type of funding source that we would be going after in the future is called low-income housing tax credits, and for that, we would be, uh, pulling a geotechnical, uh, 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 soil study as well. Uh, you know, we, 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 we've been the property owner for, since probably the nineteen forties, and, you know, we're, we're, we're pretty confident that there's, that there's, uh, no contamination. We've built, uh, around there. We, we, we did a, a ten-unit project here just a few years ago, just right down the street, haven't had any issues, but so far, the early signs from our Phase One environmental is, uh, that it's all looking good.
Okay, terrific. I, I appreciate that answer, 'cause I mean, I, I love the fact that you're doing affordable. Obviously, we know that's a big shortage of that statewide, so whenever somebody's willing to build affordable houses, it's a great thing. I, this, you're kind of in my bailiwick. I've been in real estate, commercial, multifamily for thirty-something years, so I've had properties that had that issue, just wanted to make sure that's been looked at. Um, the other concern that I have, um, is the proximity to the airport. I know it's not commercial airport, it's just kind of private, but has there, um, do we need FAA approval for the fact that you're building this so close to the airport?
Uh, we not, we not need FAA approval. Uh, you know, if we were looking for some sort of wa- waivers on, on the height restrictions that are there, uh, then we would, but we did comply, you know, as, 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 uh, Mr. Moody mentioned in the site plan, we're complying with all height restrictions, but no, there is no actual FAA approval required.
Okay. I mean, I, I, I guess, uh, and I saw that, and that was great. My consideration was more for, you know, if some dis- distressed plane comes in, uh, the, you guys are so close to this runway. I mean, according to the write-up here, it's two-hundred-and-sixty feet. Um, is there consideration given if there's a distressed flight coming in, that there's gonna be room for that flight to, to, you know, navigate a, a successful landing without having to worry about running into, uh, residential building?
So, that's my understanding of, of why they put in those height restr- and Phil, maybe you could speak a little more to it, but that's exactly what those height restrictions are, is that it's almost, the way it was explained to me by the, the county airport, uh, person who's in charge, or used to be in charge, Mr. Starr, was that picture an upside-down, uh, wedding cake, and then that's the bailout that you have, and, and why, tha- that's the reason why it's tiered upward, is for a distressed airplane who's coming in, can't make the landing, and then has to bail out. Uh, they need those tiers to move upward so that they can bank, you know, whether it's left or right, and in this case, it would be probably right. Uh, but, you know, I think we, we meet all requirements at the moment. Uh, there, there's no, no other approvals that, that are necessary.
Wha- what I'm glad to hear about that answer is that consideration has been given to that. I, I'm not a, I'm not an airplane guy, I don't know how much room you need, but I wanted to make sure that, that those are opining on this, have given some consideration to that. That's, that's great, that it has been thought about, and that is believed that there's enough room for some distressed plane to be able to navigate without hitting these buildings, so.
They have, and, and for years, for years, uh, w- we would get annual letters from the airport district, uh, to trim certain trees that we had, have, um, in, on the property, because they were too tall for that exa- exact reason. And so we're very familiar with those height restrictions, and we, you know, we maintain those trees, and obviously would develop buildings complying with those. But yeah, we're, uh, uh, we, we get reminded often of, of trimming those trees.
Okay. And then, Ben, this is probably more of a question for you. Um, in your write-up, under the, uh, Sutter County Airport portion, at the very end, it mentions that you had submitted this to, uh, the airport representative for their review, and they just never got back to you and didn't receive any comments. Um, should we not be looking for more of an affirmative response from them, rather than just they just di- didn't get back to us? Should we not be like wanting to make sure they got back to us with everything is okay on our side?
Yeah, I, I, um, definitely, I should, um, I elaborate. I definitely, the intent wasn't for the staff report to do that. So we got circulated our standard method, and then we also did a follow-up with Neil Hay, um, the County Development Services, and then he oversees the airport, just to find out, hey, is there any comments are good? And, um, and I believe Gus's team has also been in contact with him directly, but there was no formal feedback saying we need to, there, there was no additional feedback from them formally saying we need to alter anything, but there, there definitely was multiple communications and follow-up to try to, um, just double-check and confirm that there was no issues.
Okay. Yeah, that's correct, man. Uh, Mr. Harvey, our project architect on the line, all, uh, also had a conversation with, with Mr. Hay. Uh, is that right, Phil?
Yeah, it was, and it, it was exactly what you said, Gus. It's like, his concern was the height contours, and that it does create that, should a, should a plane approach from the side, it, it is give the necessary, um, heights in order to allow the plane to come in without hitting a building. So that, that, that is why the height, the, the height contours are.
Yeah. Okay. Terrific. Um, I just have a couple more questions. So in your write-up, Ben, you mentioned in one section that the parking, uh, meets code, and then yet what we're asking to opine on here, 'cause I just give them a deviation from the requirement, I didn't understand why the conflict there. If, if their hundred-and-eighty-six spaces meets the code, why do they need a deviation?
Um, I, I wanna make sure I'm clear. It, it, the, if parking does not meet the current Uba City Municipal Code for Multifamily, but it meets state law regarding the density bonus with it. And so, um, so, so, I apologize for any confusion on that. And so what we're having to do is ask for, I, I'm asking for a recommendation from the, from the planning commission and then the council to approve that reduced parking, since it does not meet the city code.
So, just to make sure I'm clear, so under the parking section of your write-up, where it says, based on the results of the onsite circulation study, the applicant is proposing a total of a hundred-and-eighty-six parking spaces, which meet the parking requirement. What does that mean?
They, they meet the parking requirement for state law. The state law is half a space per, per unit.
Okay, so the deviation then is because of what?
So the deviation is because it doesn't meet city ordinance, but it meets state law.
Okay, now I got you. They meet state, they just don't meet city. Okay, I, I got it. Okay, and then, uh, one other question, if you don't mind, I, just real quick, has any, 'cause you guys are pretty close to the levee there. Um, any consideration regarding flooding at all on this property? I mean, is that, we're all confident that that, that's not gonna be an issue, given how close it is to the river and the, and the levee?
Yeah, so there is a flood finding that we need to find in, um, through Subufka, and the, the recent levee work, all of those levees have been improved with the flurry wall, and, and Subufka's in the process of updating those maps, but, but that site, um, with the protection of the levees meets the flo- the flood standing. And then drainage, um, drainage has also been evaluated, lo- local storm drainage, on how it drains, it goes out to get special, or, or utilizes a private easement.
Okay. And then, just one last question for the applicant, and it obviously doesn't affect my, my decision, because I, I don't have any say over what you're building, how you're building it, but I'm just curious. I, on here, there was two laundry facilities that were, uh, mentioned, is that what you're building, two laundry facilities?
Uh, that's correct, uh, Commissioner Schaefer, uh.
And, hey, just curious, did that, do you feel that's sufficient for two-hundred-and-probably-fifty residents at full capacity?
Uh, yeah, the amount of the appliances that will be in the laundry rooms will meet the, our finance source requirements, and I know that they have a ratio, Luke, uh, not sure, I don't know those ratios off the top of my head, but, I mean, we'll definitely be, be in compliance.
Okay. I just, I asked that, and again, it doesn't affect my decision, 'cause it's not my business, but it being in this business for a very long time, I've had that complaint come up quite a bit from residents, that there's not laundry facilities, and this is a pretty big project. So I just thought, just curious if you'd given any thought to that. But anyway, other than that, that's all my questions. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Great. Okay, uh, at this point, uh, we'll go ahead and, um, uh, if we have any additional questions from anyone on the commission, uh, or any, uh, comments or perhaps a motion? Anybody?
To the chair, prepare to make a motion if you.
Hey, Commissioner Dusha?
Make a motion that, uh, we concur with staff's recommendation as far as, uh, that's outlined in the, uh, documents presented this evening, and recommend to the city council And recommended the city council, um. Uh, project approval. As consistent as outlined in the staff report.
Okay. Do we have a first? Dosh, you have a second? Is that correct, Commissioner Adams?
Correct.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Uh, before we do our vote, uh, any additional comments? Okay, um, uh, my only comment is, um, I'm really glad to see the project in our city. We've been going a long time. Uh, with not having, um, uh. You know, this type of product. And, um, I'm, I'm very happy to see it. And actually, I'm happy to see it for what appears to be, uh, uh. We call it value engineering, but a reasonable. Uh, rate. I know we talked about that other. Project over on the corner of, uh, Miles and Garden Highway, Miles and Percy and Garden Highway. And, um, I think the feeling was that, um, even though that we had to do certain things with that one to get the funding. Um, that that project was, uh, uh. A very nice project, uh, for, for what we were, for the customer. And, um, I, I'm just personally very happy to see this one come in and, and, and be what appears to be reasonable. In terms of the, the cost, so, um, that's, that's my comment. Um, any other comments before we go ahead with our roll call vote? Okay, uh, hearing none, um. If, uh. Uh, we have. Ben, I'm not sure, uh, oh, Jess, great. Uh, did you want to go ahead and, uh, do the roll call vote?
Yes, Commissioner Shannon?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaffer?
Yes.
Commissioner Ali?
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Dosh?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Blake?
Yes.
Chairperson Eiler?
Yes. Okay, Gus, congratulations and your team.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioners and staff for, uh, all your work and your support. Thank you so much.
Great.
Y'all have a good evening and, uh, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you and, uh, good luck, uh, with your presentation in January.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. Um. Uh, what I'd like to do at this time is take a, uh, five minute break. Um, I don't know about you guys, but I, I'm feeling that and, um. It'd be a good time to do that and maybe we could go back at, uh, seven, I've got seven eighteen right now, so instead of five, why don't we come back at seven twenty five if that works?
Thank you.
Yeah, good.
Thanks.
Okay, I'm showing less than a minute to start. All right, uh, seven twenty five, we'll go ahead and, uh, call the meeting back to order. And, uh, the next item on our agenda, actually, I guess I should have had this up. Is. Uh, public hearing to consider use permit twenty dash oh five, allowing regional emergency shelter team, uh, rest. To operate a continuous cold weather shelter at seven fifteen King Avenue. Uh, through April third, uh, twenty twenty one to mitigate, uh, COVID nineteen impacts. And I presume at this time, uh, we have a staff report by our development. Services folks, uh, Ben. I'll let you carry, I'll let you.
All right, let me, uh, let me try sharing my screen again here. Anyone see that? Okay. All right, great. So, um, so the item before us is in regards to use permit twenty oh five. The rest, so the, uh, regional emergency shelter team, cold weather shelter. And so, um. The property in question, um, is seven fifteen King Avenue, um, northeast quadrant of the city. Um, for those familiar with the area, it's, um, part of the cornerstone church facility. Um, there's, it's bounded by Washington. I guess I would say the church facility is Washington on the north. King Avenue on the south, and you have Clark and Stafford. East and west there with that block, and then you have some residential homes surrounding it. So the regional emergency shelter team, the rest is requesting to utilize what the project proposal is. Um, it's pretty straightforward. It, it's, they're requesting to use one location for the twenty twenty one winter. To operate their cold weather shelter program to help mitigate the effects of COVID nineteen. And so the request is for, with this use permit is to utilize the cornerstone church facility through April third, twenty twenty one continuously. And so, um, the. So why this triggers our review i- is with the use permit is that. A use permit are, are those for where the. Surrounding uses of the environment typically cannot be determined in advance and being proposed for a particular location. This process provides for the review of the location configuration, design and impacts of the proposed use, um, that fits in with the neighborhood. And so with this one. Um, it's a little interesting and I'll get into it a little bit about the cold weather rest and the rotating cold weather shelters. And so i- the location here, Cornerstone Church. Um, the main hall and the facilities are on the east side of this block. And then seven thirteen is, is the office. And then seven fifteen where they're proposing to house, um, the residents, uh, the participants overnight. Is a, um, is a house that's been converted, um, to a more of a meeting room kind of a use, and then you could see in the back. They have kind of a courtyard area with back access to their facility. And so with this, there's, there's a garage. That's been converted and, and then, um. The house itself for open areas. And so with this originally came up when they, they reached out in the fall that said, hey. With the logistics of, of COVID and, and cleaning and staff and trying to minimize, um, contamination. Uh, or in, you know, spreading the virus, um, with this one location, they were searching for a spot. I had them, um, coordinate with fire. And then the billing department also just to, to make sure their, um, capacity impacts and whatever. Needs that are also so they could find a facility that, that doesn't have an issue with fire or billing codes. And so what they've came back with is this seven fifteen King Avenue. And so here's a street view of the location. It's this remodeled house that, um, blends in, is well maintained and it, it's, um. Part of that facility. The land use. Um, just to get a visual on it, it's smack dab in the middle of, um. Um, single family, low density residential, um, with the zoning being R one. And so even though this is, um, the majority of the land use in the city. And it's typically set up for single family homes, it does allow for, um. It does allow for institutions, daycares, parks, and institutional uses such as churches. And so that's really where this church is, it was allowed through a use permit or, or came in. Um, prior to the standards constructed, it's constructed and being used. And so, um, the church is allowed use in this site. And then cold weather shelters are allowed in the R one through the, the, typically through the, um, zoning clearance process. But with this, um. But that's through, um, our standard code, which establishes requirements that they only are allowed for seven days in a twenty one day period. With, with a twenty one day break. And so with this, what's really the change is instead of having this twenty, instead of being seven days on. Twenty one days rest, then back. allowable for use again, they want the continued use, um, through April third. So, uh, just a cl- clip from the staff report, it's low density, single family residential all around it. Um, except where the church has been converted. Or the church complex. So I, I threw on here the criteria, it was in the staff report of what the standard criteria is in the city's municipal code regarding rotating churches. Uh, November first through April thirtieth each year is the allowed period of time. There's a maximum of thirty people. Um, and then it talks in number two about how it shall wait twenty one days. And so that's where the conflict arises with the existing code in the request. Um, and then there's s- some more criteria as far as the eligible participants and operation hours and, and the, having the plan in place. And so, um. You know, this rest has, it has quite a history. When I was looking into this, it was, it was kind of interesting. Um, you know, I was with the city in twenty ten, but I, I didn't really have a, a grasp of what was going on. At that time with, uh, the old fire station number four and how that was. Um, originally used for the cold weather and then how rest came to be. Um, and then continued the program for the community here for the last decade. And so with that, they typically have fifteen to twenty, um, participants each night. Um, and they're looking more for clientele associated with families and tied to their faith base and, and how they use. The churches of the area to help, um. Feed and, and house, um, participants. And so. Um, it's determined environmentally, um, that is exempt, uh, on the basis that. It's a negligible expansion of an existing use regarding the operation of a private structure. Is, is where, um, what I see it fits into the exemption. And so under the use permit criteria. Really, the one big one here is number five. Is the establishment or operation of the use or building applied. For will not be detrimental to the health, safety, peace, comfort, general welfare persons residing. Screen blocking my thing here. Residing or working in the vicinity of the proposed use or be detrimental in injuries to property improvements in the neighborhood. Or, or to the general welfare of the city. That occasion, so that's really for me, the, the big concern is how does that affect the, uh, the neighborhood and the residents? Um, we did get one call, you know, so when we sent the letters out. You know, I've seen a couple of these in the news. Um, Chairman Eiler. Has even shared a couple of articles. We've seen it down in Fairfield and the San Francisco Bay area where. They've really hit the news, a lot of these, because there's concerns that these shelters. Become permanent and they, um, they affect the property value of the neighborhood. And, um, pretty, um, vocal for those. With this, we sent the notices, um. The minimum requirement is three hundred. We went out at five hundred at least, and then we made sure we got the whole blocks around there for the notice. Um, the only person that we received comment. On about it was a person that actually was having difficulty picking up the mail, and so they called the city to find out what it, um. What we sent them. And so there was a discussion about. Um, this and some maybe potential concerns if they did see loitering, how we handled it and it would, you know, we suggested it would be. If it was approved through us or, or the contact with the rest, because the rest i- is very. Um, open to feedback and, and making sure that they're, um, compliant with the neighborhood and, and working with the facility in the neighborhood to, to meet those goals. And so she didn't have any concerns. Honestly, she didn't even know that they had been operating for seven days. There, uh, and, um, just with the, the way they park adjacently, i- it seems like it's, it's pretty quiet. And so. With me tonight, uh, I believe Nick Anderson, the executive director with REST is, is here to help answer some questions. About his operations in his facility. And it, it hope address any concerns that you have, and I'd be happy to answer it. So, uh, really with this staff, with, with REST's history of operating. The last decade in the community with, um, the facility being, um, able to handle what they're proposing to do. Um, in, in, in light of the pandemic and providing that need for, um. The home in our community, um, staff has recommended. Um, the county, the planning commission, conduct a public hearing, make the necessary findings. Um, to approve the use permit. And so with that and with, subject to the conditions of approval, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Um, I think, uh, what we'll do is go ahead and, um.
I think what we'll do is go ahead and hear from the applicant as well. And then, we can open it up for, for questions. Did we have the applicant on?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, thank you, Ben. I appreciate all the work that you put into this and the support you've given us. So, yeah, I think Ben summed it up really well. We've always been a rotating shelter. We've been operating in Sutter County for the, since 2010. We've always been a rotating shelter in compliance with the city ordinance. But this year, because of COVID, our volunteer numbers are way down, which makes running that rotating pattern, that schedule, a lot harder. And then, also just wanting to cut down on the exposures inherent in moving from site to site. We wanted to be at one location. And, yeah, so I just, I want to thank Ben again and thank the city for their willingness to consider this idea. Yeah, and I'm, I'm open. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Okay, thanks. And it's Nick, right?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Nick.
Yeah, great. Okay, um, with that, we'll go ahead and go around the screen. And I've got Commissioner Schaefer. Do you have any questions or comments? Did we lose Commissioner Schaefer? We'll continue on. He can come back. Commissioner Shannon? Commissioner Shannon? Can you guys hear me?
I can hear you, Dale.
I can hear you.
Doing a check here. All right. Commissioner Shannon, do you have any comments?
I'm finally here. I was having trouble unmuting. No, I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Adams.
Hi. I'm here. I just had a couple of questions in regards to security at night. I know that some of the shelters, especially during COVID and other communities that I work in, are having issues because they become full. And they've had to bring on security to assist them with that, especially in residential areas. And then, also, they've done some signage in order to help identify when the facility is full from a distance rather than having to approach. Do you have any implementation plans or operational plans that deal with those types of concerns?
That's a, that's a good question. As far as signage, we, we don't, but we could, we could definitely create something. And, yeah, we're doing, we do nightly intake. So, and we're, our capacity this year will be 15 people based on the facility we're using. So, yeah, we could definitely come up with a way to notify people when the shelter is full.
Okay, just some ideas and some things that we've run into at other locations that I felt you might want to consider and that the commission might want to consider. And security was the other one at night. I know that we had to do that in order to appease some of the concerns in the neighborhood. It doesn't, doesn't sound like we had any comments come in, so that may be a moot point. But it may be something that we want to place in the condition of approval just in case something were to arise and that we needed to address, then it would be there for, for you to implement if there was a concern that was brought forth. And those are my only comments.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Adams. Commissioner Duscher?
Thank you. Commissioner Adams addressed the issues that I had. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Ollie?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. Has this particular address at the Cornerstone Church, the 715 King Avenue, been used as a rest shelter in previous years?
That's a good question. It has not been used as a rest shelter. On the, the map here, on the image, the long building that runs north-south on the west side of the parking lot is the building we usually use. Yeah, the one that the cursor is indicating there. So, that's the church fellowship hall, kind of a big multipurpose room. And that's what we usually use for the shelter, and that's what we've been using for the shelter this year. You know, waiting on the approval to move into the 715 house. So, this would be the first time using the 715 building. We met with Jesse Freyas, the fire marshal, a few weeks ago when he gave us some modifications to make. And we've been working on those. And, and so, I think by early next week, he's going to be able to come in and check on that and make sure that everything is as it should be. So, yeah, so we haven't used it before, but we're kind of going through the process of making sure that it'll be safe to use.
Okay, and I know that there's not, there's only been the one question, but the property next door, 713, is that part of the church plant also?
Yes, that's the church office.
Okay, perfect. Okay. I'm sorry, I missed those details. And that was my only question, because I thought that they had used the long hall in the past, and I just see it getting closer to the neighborhood. And the, the big lawn area in the back, that belongs to the church plant also?
Correct. Yeah, that's, and that's all fenced in. So, the 715, the 713, and that back part of the fellowship hall all share that same fenced-in backyard. There's locks on the gates, so it's, it's secure. So, the, the residents at the shelter, if they're needing to step outside to smoke or something like that, or if they have a bicycle that they bring to the shelter, they need a place to sort, they'll be storing it out back there so that it's not a disturbance to the neighborhood.
Excellent. And my only comment is I'm glad that you're coming up with a plan that will probably help to save some, some more folks from getting COVID by not moving around. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Blake?
Thank you. Hi, Nick. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. So, I'm a huge advocate and appreciate everything that REST provides our community. And so, I do like the condition of approval concept that Commissioner Adams and Duscher recommended for the security of you and your team. So, I would like to hear what language we would like to use around that, because I would advocate for that condition. So, but Nick, I have a question. So, the fellowship hall will no longer be used once you obtain 715 or in addition to?
That's correct. We, we'll be using the 715 building exclusively. Once we are approved, we move in there.
Okay. And then, last question is, why is intake being conducted differently this year? Is it due to COVID?
It is. So, typically, and I thank you for the question, typically, well, every year in the past, we've done intake at Hands of Hope. And then, we transport the clients over to the shelter, whatever church we're at that week. And COVID presented at least a couple kind of big issues with that. One is just that it took us probably at least 10 volunteer shifts a day to, to run that cycle of getting people checked in at one place, getting them over to another place, getting them back in the morning. And a lot of our volunteers are 65 or older, or they've got a health condition, or they're taking care of a family member who has a health condition. So, a lot of them felt uncomfortable. You know, participating this year, which, which we understand, we wanted to support them in being able to stay home. And it's also just easier not having so many people in and out of the shelter, just kind of controlling the amount of contacts and exposures that we have. And then, also, we were concerned with transporting people by van back and forth, you know, between Hands of Hope and the shelter is, is the closest contact they would have, you know, to, to others. And we were so concerned about not being able to maintain social distancing and just the increased exposure, you know, having people sharing a van, sharing that confined space. So, that was why we opted to try to do intake at one location, well, at the shelter location. And it's, it's been going well. If our clients have transportation issues, we're, we are providing them with a monthly bus pass. And we'll, you know, renew it, you know, each month that they're in the shelter so that they can get back and forth. There's a bus stop at the corner of the property on Washington and Clark, up at the northeast corner of the church's property. So, it's pretty accessible by bus. And, and then, I, yeah, I'd love to talk about how we could do security or have a contingency for, for security that becomes an issue. I'd, I'd like to say too that we have, we, we've always had a person who stays up all night at the shelter. And for the last several years, so most of our history, that's been a paid staff person. So, it's their, their job, you know, to stay up all night to make sure that the facility and the guests are, are secure and safe. And so, we do have that already in place. And if, then if there's additional things you'd like to, to discuss or implement, I'd be open to talk about that, too.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Great. Okay, um, I'm going to go ahead and I've got a couple of questions here. One thing I want to disclose is that I actually went over there a couple nights ago, just parked outside for about five, 10 minutes and just kind of watched. You had a, there must have been a youth event going on at the church that evening. But one thing I noticed was nobody was parking on the street. Everybody, it was, it was very quiet from the neighbor's perspective. There was one neighbor that was out kind of walking around and everybody, it, it was just extremely quiet. So, I, I kind of expected, maybe it might be a little bit different than that, but it was, that was good to see. In, in terms of, you, you mentioned how, how the folks get there. You mentioned by bicycle perhaps or van. Do you have people arriving at different times or is it, is it usually by van from Hands of Hope, Nick?
Yeah, thank you. So, we, we have a few clients who have their own vehicles. So, they, they come and, you know, park them in the church lot overnight. And then, we have some people I think who probably get to us just on foot, and then people who use the bus system. And, so, the, the guests, when they enter the shelter, they sign an agreement on, on the rules, the expectations, the behavior. And part of that agreement is that they won't loiter around the property or the neighborhood in, during times when the shelter is closed, which is during the day between 8:00 AM, and then we open again at 5:00 PM. So, we make, we make that clear to them. That's something we'll continue to remind them of. And, you know, if neighbors are noticing that being an issue. All right, Ben, if anybody calls you, you're welcome. Please give out my number, have them call me, and I'd be happy to address those issues. And then, I'll, I'll be visiting the neighbors, especially like in, in front and beside the property along King Avenue and giving them, you know, one of our brochures and my number. And then, if they see any problems with loitering or, or garbage or anything, I'll just ask them to call me and we'll, we'll address it directly.
Great. Okay. There's always, you know, there, there can be potential problems with the clientele. And, and I hate to say this, but how do, how do you screen for that? And I'm, in particular, you know, to my mind, potential sex offenders or not potential, but people that are listed as sex. Do you, do you screen? Do you, do you make sure that the clients? I'm not sure. What is your screening process for the, the folks that come there?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a good question. So, we check Megan's law to make sure that the individual is, is not a sex offender. And if they're on Megan's law, then they are not allowed in the shelter because we, we do have children quite regularly present in the shelter. So, yeah, that's, that's one of the, really about the only screening as far as someone's background. And then, you know, other than that, it's, it's really behavior-based. If the person is, you know, able to take care of their own basic needs, if they're mentally, behaviorally, you know, in a state where they can get along with other people in a congregate shelter, then, then we're able to allow them in.
Perfect. Okay. The, the last comment that I had was I too be interested in. Ben, I don't know if you've thought or been able to come up with some, some thoughts about the, the security or something that we could, we could add to that, but would, would welcome any thoughts there. And potentially, while you're thinking about that, or if you have, we can also, we need to open up for any public comment. But did you, did you have anything you'd like to add or thoughts?
Well, the thoughts are, it's really a good comment. I wish I worked it out beforehand, so we weren't doing it. We'll hear. And so, but a couple of things come to mind is, is what I've seen for other facilities. We could have it set like on a trigger, like if there's a call received. Or we could do something more generic that, that we implement security and noticing measures acceptable to the city to address, to address any concerns identified by the city going forward.
Okay, all right.
Through the chair?
Yes, Commissioner Adams, I think you were first, and then Commissioner Shannon.
Yeah, sorry about that. Man, I just kind of jotted this down. So, security measures to include but not limited to professional services may be required by the city based on impacts to the surrounding neighborhood and/or shelter operations as, as identified by staff, city staff.
If Nick's, if Nick's acceptable to that, is the city staff is acceptable to that. And then, this is being recorded, so we could go back and memorialize that in the final conditions.
Okay. And Commissioner Shannon?
This approval that we're working on right now is only for a time period that expires in April, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do we really need to go to the extent of addendumizing this approval? I, my question, my thought is, between now and April, when it's done, any future activity like this will have to come back before us. It's not, it's not a given right that they can do this.
I would make sure the conditions, I, I believe how Commissioner Adams has it written, it would be at the staff level that we would review, it wouldn't come back to the planning commission.
Correct. That was my intent.
No, no, no. I'm talking about next year.
Oh, next year?
This is not for this to be approved beyond the, you know, one week on and 21 days off, right? Or is this going to be an ongoing thing? The way I perceive this is this is an exception for this year because of COVID.
Correct.
So, next year, this is a moot point, and it reverts back to the, the ordinance that we already have?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Presuming that our vaccine holds.
Okay, I'll, I'll leave it at that then. Through the chair?
Yes, Commissioner Ollie?
REST has been operating for 10 years and hasn't had that requirement on them? Have there been unusual, you know, cases that have been brought to the city as a problem in any time in those 10 years? On their previous format?
From, from city staff's perspective, I'm unaware of many issues. Honestly, I had to go back and make sure this was on the books regarding rotating cold weather shelters. I think there, there's not too many people that know it's on the ordinance except for Mr. Anderson. Nick, do you have anything to add about maybe potential concerns or issues that you've had over the years?
I, I, I don't think so. I think it's been, you know, pretty, pretty low impact in terms of noise or disruption in the neighborhoods around the churches that we view. I, you know, as far as I know, I don't know that we've had any complaints from neighbors, you know, when we're at the different church sites. I think it's been pretty smooth. When, when the guests arrive at the shelter, then they, if they're going to spend the night, they can't go back outside. So, they don't have people hanging, you know, hanging around on the street or things like that. You know, if they need to smoke, like I said, we have a place for them out back so that they're not, you know, there's not a disturbance of foot traffic or noise along streets.
So, with a 10-year history, it just seems kind of odd to be adding that addendum when there hasn't been. In 10 years of use permit, there hasn't been an issue just because they're making this change at this time. And they've already provided for people to go outdoors if they need to smoke. They have to sign that they're going to be quiet. They're not going to get to come back if they are disruptive. So, it just seems kind of extreme for our purposes tonight of recommending this to the city council for approval to, or...
I don't believe. I don't believe.
It's just kind of like an extreme measure.
This one can be approved at the planning commission level.
Excuse me. Okay. So we're approving that at our level, but it just seems kind of extreme to jump to that. Oh, well, there might be, there might be an issue.
Through the chair.
Yes, Vice Chair Blake.
Um, I agree. I, I, I see your point, Commissioner Ali. However, this year they are decreasing capacity. And I'm just worried for the safety of, of the, mainly the staff and Nick and his staff and his volunteers. And if they need any assistance, we have a community right now in Dallas, due to lack of facilities for them to be at and knowing that this intake is going to have half the capacity as it usually does. That's the only reason I, I think it would behoove us to basically have a police department have the radar of rest and, and just to ensure that they're, they're okay.
Yeah, well, I, I would agree, Commissioner Blake, you know, that the police should be aware of where it's at and what's going on. But what I'm hearing about providing security, that's just another burden that we're putting on rest financially, that's going to perhaps impact them at a time when people are not being as generous to provide the services that they do if they suddenly have to, it's interpreted that they have to provide security.
I'm, I'd like to weigh in to this as well. I, I believe that this was only if, if problems are, come to the city's attention. Correct?
Through the chair. Yeah, let me just clarify.
So.
Let me just clarify a little bit. I speak of this experience only because I deal with multiple communities that have warming centers and cooling centers, and we're gonna enter, potentially enter that situation. And we've ran into these problems. And I would like only to have this in the conditions of approval, should it be needed to be invoked. Not as a, that I think it's going to happen, but I have actually seen this occur in other communities. It may not happen here. But I'd just like to have that, that level of security, knowing that, you know, with us issuing this, this conditional use permit, that we've already thought about the possibility of this occurring, even though it hasn't in the past. So many things haven't occurred in the past that we're dealing with now. It's just a level of, of oversight that we're letting the neighborhoods know that, you know, we're taking care of that concern should it arise. And if it doesn't arise, then it never gets employed. But should it arise, we have the ability to meet that concern that may be brought forth. And then the city staff can determine whether or not that would be required. And I'm sure rest would want to, you know, be safe anyway. We may not even have to requirement, require it. There may be issues that come up that they are able to handle internally. But just as a, a point of measure to show the community that we're looking at that and considering that if we are providing this approval. And I don't, you know, I don't see us not approving it, but it was just a recommendation based on some experiences I've had.
This is Commissioner Schaefer through the chair. Just a quick question. Has the, the resident homeowners, I should say, to the west, have they had any issues with this? Have they expressed a concern over security? Because they're the ones closest to the property.
Through the phone call, the one person that we were in contact with, they were, they didn't have ready concerns about it, but they did want to know what the process was if something did arise. And, and so informally, we told them to contact the city and they contact rest, you know, and we definitely work to address any sort of issues. And this, this condition, if, if it's, if it's really, it's a contingency, if it does happen, staff doesn't have any issues with it.
And, and how many typical residents do you have on an average night in this home? Do you think?
We're gonna have capacity of about 15 people is what the fire marshal thought. We have 12 tonight right now at the, in the fellowship hall with us. So yeah, I, I would think there will probably be times in the season where we're at capacity at 15 people. And then I would think we'd probably be between 10 and 15 most nights of the season.
And just out of curiosity, and I mean, how, how long has this facility, it's been used for this purpose? And have you had an issue security wise since it's being used as this purpose?
No, we, we haven't had a security issue here at Cornerstone Church. You know, I think part of the idea is that the, the guests are allowed a smoking area that's, you know, that's fenced in. So there's not, you know, any potential of them interacting with other traffic on the streets or things like that. And, you know, while we'd been, right now, we've been fellowship hall, we've always been in the fellowship hall when we're at Cornerstone Church. And we're gonna be in the 715, but, you know, they share that same fenced in backyard. So it's the same and a secured enclosed, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. At this point, while we're mulling that around, I would definitely like to open it up to hear if anyone from the public has any comments. And actually, do we have any written comments, Brian?
No comments at this point.
Okay, is there anyone still on with us?
There are still two others online along with Nick.
Okay, all right. All right, so I'm gonna give it just a moment. Does anyone have any comments from the public? Okay, I, I just, you know, from the standpoint of this is definitely in a residential neighborhood, I want to make sure that, that we don't have any public comments. So I'm gonna go ahead and close the public, public hearing. And any other additional thoughts, comments? Potentially a motion?
No, I, I've never seen the pitch.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we've got a little.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Do we have, it sounds like we've, we've discussed whether security or not, I don't know. Commissioner Dosh, do you have any comments with respect to the, with respect to what we're proposing potentially with security or not?
My line of thought is consistent with the addendum that Commissioner Adams came up with as far as just the ability to enact something at the city level with rest, just if the need should arise. I think that's prudent to have that included.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else have any comments or thoughts with respect to that, with the security measure? Okay.
Question?
Yes.
Just, oh, this is Nick again with rest.
Sure.
Okay, thanks. In, in terms of, like, you know, security being necessary would, you know, it's, it's, it's rare, but every once in a while, you know, we might have a guest who's very upset. You know, to the point that they're causing disturbance in the shelter. And they have to leave. And, and again, this is very rare, but where we might have to call 911, you know, if they're creating a disturbance and they're not willing to leave on their own. Is that the kind of thing that would probably trigger then requiring additional security? Or is it more if there's an issue between rest and the clients and the neighbors?
I think it would be.
Go ahead, Ben.
I, I, I would say they're all warranted to be discussed, Nick, you know, based on the communication. And then we would work with you on what your plan is. And then I'd probably confirm it with the police department if, you know, if it became more regular. But it would definitely be worth a discussion on any of them if it should, it does occur.
Okay, thank you.
Additional comments, Commissioner Dosh?
No, I have none. Thank you.
Okay. You were leaning way forward there. I thought you, okay, anybody, any additional comments in addition to what Ben said? And again, and I guess my comment with that would be leaving it to staff's discretion in terms of whether they're doing it or not.
Through the chair. Keep in mind.
Mr. Shannon.
Four-month period.
Correct.
And it's worked fine before. And if there is a disturbance, they already have a procedure. And if this disturbance becomes a lot, then it's over. You know, this isn't gonna happen next year. This is why I express a concern with having another burdensome addendum to this. Because if we're approving this for a year or, you know, forever, I could definitely get behind that. But for four months, it just seems like it's worked for 10 years. Why do we want to do that for four months?
Okay.
This is Commissioner Schaefer. Quick question, and I don't know, I'm not very familiar with this business. But how long is the average stay of a resident here? Could, is it just done by, by day? I mean, someone shows up and they stay there that night and they have to leave the next day? Or how is that done?
That's a great question. I, so we are, I think one of the things we do really well is we're a really easy shelter to get into. We do intake seven nights a week, including holidays. So, you know, the moment somebody has a need, whether they just lost their apartment or whatever it is, they can come to us and have sheltering and also they're not falling into that, the lifestyle of living on the streets. And, and, you know, we see pretty much everything in terms of length of stay. We, we've seen people who are with us for one night and then they're able to move on. We've seen, especially in the past years, you know, people who stayed most of the season, which is, you know, 18 weeks. In the last couple of years, we tried to work a lot more on, on the case management side of things and helping guests come up with a plan to where they're able to transition out of the emergency shelter sooner to a more stable location. And it's wonderful because, you know, now there's, there's better way, there's the Habitat for Humanity and sort of county partnered in, in turning the Baymont Inn into affordable housing. So that's gonna be opening soon. So there's a lot more options than there were for people a couple of years ago. So that, that's meaning that people stay in the shelter is, is typically shorter. And then we're able to move them on, you know, to, to their next step and help the next person.
So just in your ballpark opinion, what is the average length of stay? Is it three nights, five nights, a week, two weeks?
I would say, yeah, but probably at three weeks on average.
Okay, okay. I'm just curious if somebody can stay there long enough where if they become a problem, someone's gonna have to come and remove them. If it's, if it's a nightly thing, then you just, you know, kind of hit miss. But if someone can stay there for three weeks, you know, somebody could become a problem in that length of time.
Through the chair, John.
Yes, Commissioner.
In the past, they rotated from site to site. So the maximum amount of time that they were at any one site was seven days.
Okay, gotcha.
It was a 21-day break, and then they could come back for another seven days. The, what we're approving is allowing them to have continual residency because of COVID.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that, Commissioner Shannon. This is something I don't know much about. I'll be honest with you.
And the shelter is closed during the day. So, you know, people have to go up, you know, out during the day, go to Hands of Hope or go to their doctor's appointments, whatever it is. And then they come back in the evening, you know, so so I don't think, you know, there's not quite as much problem of somebody just settling in and, and, you know, after a couple of weeks and really taking root.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion or motion?
Yeah, so this is Commissioner Ali. I guess I feel like we've asked a lot of the same questions over and over. And so, Nick, I'm just gonna ask you, which is a a name question to me. You're not dealing with 5150s, are you?
No.
You have a screening process?
Right, yeah, yeah. So, so yeah, if, if somebody's having, you know, severe behavioral health crisis, or either a danger to themselves or someone else, right, we, we wouldn't be able to take them into the shelter. And, you know, something becomes apparent once you're in the shelter, then we would get in touch with, with behavioral health or law enforcement, you know, 911, whatever, you know, needs to happen. So right, yeah, somebody's in the middle of a crisis like that, yeah, they're not, they're not coming into the shelter.
Okay, so I'm just gonna comment, but for the grace of God, there go I to that shelter. And if it were me, I would be so grateful to have a nice warm place to stay at night. And I'm, I know I'd have to be out during the day, but I'd be so grateful. I'd be appreciating that I had a nice warm place to sleep. And I just feel like we're, we're creating an issue by the addendum.
Agree.
Okay.
So I, I guess, you know, I, I would make a motion for the rest of it, but I would not be interested in the addendum.
Okay. What we, if you want to go ahead and make a motion, and we'll just kind of see where it goes. Yes, Commissioner Dosh?
Good move, approval of this worthwhile project. Consistent with staff's recommendation, also with the addendum indicated by Commissioner Adams. Due to the fact that the representative of rest said most of his volunteers are 65 and over, and he has lost them because of their concern over the COVID crisis and, and being in a environment such as this, that we swell this medical condition is still among us.
Okay, so just to interrupt, you, you have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Ali. And so it either needs to be second or, or
I'm sorry, I didn't, Commissioner Ali, did you actually make a motion?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, then, yeah, I, I didn't catch it. I thought you were, you said you would be willing to make a motion. All right, so Commissioner Ali made a motion without the amendment. Do we have a second?
I will second that, Commissioner Shannon.
Okay, so any further discussion?
This is Lori through the chair. I think with the conversation with Mr. Dosh, I think we may want to consider taking that motion and adding the security component and then seeing where the vote occurs.
Do you want to omit the motion?
Well, so there's a motion and a second. And so you could ask for a friendly amendment. If not, we'll
And I'm asking for a friendly amendment.
Okay, so Commissioner Ali?
I would rather the vote go forward and if it, and see where it goes.
Without the amendment. Okay.
Without the amendment.
All right. And Commissioner Shannon, I presume you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote and we'll see if we have it. And if not, we'll add the addendum, see where we go with that.
Commissioner Shannon?
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Ali?
Aye.
Commissioner Adams?
Aye.
Commissioner Dosh?
Because of the need for the project, aye.
Vice Chairperson Blake?
Yes.
Chairperson Iler?
I'm gonna say this, Commissioner Dosh, we need the project. Yes. So with that, congratulations, Nick. You have your project. And
I would.
I, I also presume that if, if things heat up over there a little bit, that the city will find a thing care of it one way or the other. No matter what.
Yeah, there, there's definitely as part of the, the criteria, there's, there's screening process for Yeah, there, there, there's definitely as part of the, the criteria, there's, there's a screening process for eligible participants. And, and we've heard staffs concerned about making sure notice and security. And so we'll work with Nick. I'm sure he's just as concerned about that too, to make sure it doesn't lead into an issue.
And, and Nick, it's great that you've done the, the, the job that you've done over the years with your organization. I think your, your dad was involved with that too, Jim, if I, if I recall. So, um, great.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate the, the city's support. And, uh, yep, Jim is actually our board secretary at the moment. And, uh, a fun, fun bit of worthless trivia, the 713 address on the, on the image, the map we were looking at. I spent the first couple of years of my life there because that used to be the church parsonage and before they converted to the office. So, um, yeah, thank you all very much. I, let's, yeah, let's just keep in touch. We want to be, rest wants to be a team player and, and be a good neighbor. So any concerns you have, feel free to communicate those to me. Thank you.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda, uh, future agenda items. Ben?
Let's see. Um, I don't know if we could share the screen with Jaspreet or Ryan. But I honestly, so what do we got? It's Christmas time and the holidays. And so our, our next meeting is scheduled for December 23rd. And so that will be canceled. And then the, uh, the next meeting would, is going to be January 13th. And right now I'm planning on canceling that also. So the actual next physical meeting, virtually, most likely, will be January 27th. And so right now, the January 27th meeting is what we're shooting for. That will, um, right now, what's on the books is a couple subdivision maps. So there's a couple tentative subdivision maps. One is called Dunn Ranch, which is the southeast corner of Monroe and Rojo Ranchero. And then Domain Three, that, that's about a 68 residential unit. And then we have a Domain Three, uh, which is 13 residential lots, um, just north of Kenneth Way, off of Blevin Road back in there. And so, um, so that's on the future agenda, but the next two meetings will be canceled. And then the, the, the January 27th is what we're targeting.
Okay. Uh, next item, Development Services Director Report, Ben?
Okay. Think I have a lot, but I was going to give you a few updates. If I could find my notes here. So Americans Tire, um, just worked to get their final today. And so you've seen them open. I think they're shooting to open tomorrow if possible. And so Americans Tire, they're at the northeast corner of Stabler and 20.
Yep.
Actually printed out my notes here so I could read them off and I can't find them.
Ben, just for the sake of time, anything new that's come in that's, um, an application, a full application?
You know, uh, we got some maps. So the maps are the big thing that are going right now in Harder. And so for the next, the next two meetings in January and February, we have three subdivision, actually basically four subdivision maps. You're going to have the whole Harder project come to you. We're shooting for February if we can get everything together. And then you have this West, West Sanborn Estates, which is the corner of Sanborn and Cherry down there. And so, and then, and then you have Dunn Ranch in the other one. So there's some, so we're getting some preliminary work going on with residential, um, lots. And then also a, a, that's keeping us busy is the two maps, the, the two tentative maps that you approved for Hooper Ranch and then for the Sanborn infill project there, they're actually being finalized. And so a lot of times we prove these, approve these tentative maps and they never go anywhere. But those two maps, Hooper, um, they've actually been bought by developers and they're, they're working through recording the final map to make it real. And so, um, we've, we're reviewing and processing those right now. Um, I think with anticipation that they're shooting for this construction season coming up for those two projects. But besides that, you got DDs, we're kind of working through them with the sign. They, they just recently put some signs up and they're, they pulled their permit for the, uh, to do that remodel. They were kind of holding off, but they, they just pulled that permit. So it looks like they're going to be moving forward with that construction. Gosh, of course I didn't have any notes, but that's, that's the big stuff that comes to mind right now. We, and we did, I, I would relay the other big, I, you know, besides truck facilities kind of coming in. We do have, um, the hotel submitted their, their latest round of plan check comments and reviews. So it was nice to see that they're keeping that active and going. So we're hoping that's the final plan check process to get that over the hump for the permit on that.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much, Ben. Appreciate it. Mr. Shannon, report of actions of the Southern County Planning Commission.
That meeting was last night. And I had just found out I tested for COVID, so I can't even tell you. I don't remember anything about the meeting.
That's through the chair.
Once again, Richard, save me.
Commissioner Dosher?
Through the chair, we had one item only last night that we took action on. It was a recommendation on a five estate residential lot at the corner of, uh, the southwest corner of Markley and North Township Road. There was some citizen comment relative to that. And I believe that, uh, all the letters and the questions posed in the letters were addressed satisfactorily.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Before we adjourn, any other comments?
Merry Christmas.
I, I want to say Merry Christmas and definitely, uh,
New Year too.
It's, it's, it was a long meeting tonight and I'm glad we were able to work through it and a good discussion.
Yeah. Hey, I want to share Merry Christmas, but I got, I saw one yesterday. Make 2020 wonderful.
It shouldn't be too hard.
All right. On that note, we are adjourned.
Thank you.